You ready Scotty?
We'd like to call the meeting to order. City council meeting for May eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Uh, Jennifer, would you please read the, uh, call the roll?
If I can just remind everybody to please mute your phone unless you're speaking, to hold on the background noise, I'd appreciate it, thank you. Alderman Consilla?
Here.
Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco? Alderman Pousa?
Here.
Here.
Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Anthony? Alderman Anthony? Please mute your phones if you're, if possible, thank you. Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dittelman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Wagon?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington?
Here.
Alderman Barfield?
Here.
Alderman Anthony? Okay, I have everybody but Anthony.
Okay. Uh, Forest Department Heads, uh, City Attorney Harner, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and, and Treasurer Hart?
Yes, sir, here.
The only other ones I was counting on tonight possibly was, uh, Finance Director Jamie Maitred?
I'm here.
And, and our City Engineer Michael Velloff?
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay, so if there's other department heads, thank you for being attentive, but I'm not gonna, shouldn't be putting any of you on the spot of questions. Uh, I've tried to limit it to, uh, the ones who had business on the agenda tonight. Okay, so at this, this time, ladies and gentlemen, I will, uh, ask everyone to please rise and, and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm muted.
Thank you and good evening. We have no public hearing this evening, I will now, uh, open public participation and when I do, please state your name, make sure I recognize you, and limit your comments to two to three minutes, uh, preferably about a topic on the agenda, certainly something in the city's, uh, you know, city business. So I will now open public participation. Anyone out there?
Mayor, this is David Braswell.
Okay, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to speak just very quickly about, uh, some concerns, I spent a lot of time last two months in the old Belleville Historic District, where I own several historic homes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, first concern is this, a number of street lights out in the six hundred block of East Garfield Street, we've marked them with tape.
Okay, uh, thank you for that, we'll, we'll get a-
The second concern-
Go ahead.
And the second con- the second concern has to do with, uh, probably the most important one, there is a hole in the street at the intersection of Abin and Fulton. It's about a foot square, the neighbors have kindly, uh, stacked the bricks up in one corner, but they need to be mortared back in. Those who are us who live there, we know to drive around it, but anyone else could have a major, uh, problem with their car if they hit it directly.
So, so it's a hole-
This is southeast corner of-
There's a hole in the roadway?
A hole in the street. In the, in the brick street of Abin Street, at Fulton Street.
On Abin at, at Fulton?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh-
Southeast of Washington, southeast corner of Washington School.
Okay, I will make sure that tomorrow morning the Street Department, uh, pays that a visit, and, and then also we'll get a, we'll get a look at the lights and we'll get that turned in also, okay?
Right, and, and one final quick thing, um, I call it graffiti, but on six telephone poles in the Bel- old Belleville Historic District, there are, uh, there's the words LOC, it looks like graffiti to me, they've been there, the word letters have been there for over fifteen months. I'd like to have it removed, it's not Ameren, it's on an Ameren pole, but I've been told by Ameren employees that the contractor did that when they had to put in new, uh, guy wires. And, um, they could have used a piece of metal or something, but it looks like graffiti and I'm hoping that someone from Ameren or the city could get someone to remove that, um, that writing. It's in white letters on all, in six poles around Garfield, Escudé Avenue, and Abin Street.
Yeah, I know that was brought to my attention and we looked at it, we, we did determine Ameren did it. Uh, we'll see if our graffiti remover will take it off relatively, uh, reasonably, okay?
That would be great, thanks, thanks Mayor, that was, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you David, is there anyone else tonight for public participation? Is there anyone else tonight for this meeting for public participation? Hearing none, I will close public participation. We now move to, uh, recognitions, appointments, and presentations. Did I miss something? Okay, um, we're going on to pre- presentations, and the first presentation this evening is, I, I want to read a proclamation, hello?
Please mute your phones.
Okay, I want to read tonight a procla- uh, a proclamation that we have prepared, recognizing the high school seniors, uh, it's very unique year for all of us in so many ways, but these students after twelve year, twelve years of education normally have a pretty, uh, a pretty nice recognition, uh, leading up to graduation and then the graduation ceremony and then the parties, and this year we know that that's being changed drastically. So I'm gonna read this just for a second, bear with me. Whereas in most cases, the two thousand twenty commencement ceremonies have been replaced with virtual commencement ceremonies due to the global COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas families and friends, neighbors and educators should encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all students and honor their hard work. And whereas the graduating seniors and educators of Altoth Catholic High School, Belleville East High School, Belleville West High School, and Governor French Academy have greatly contributed to our community. And whereas the most effective way to increase awareness to the value of education and to honor graduating seniors is through our openness to learn and knowledge, acknowledge everyone's abilities, talents, the importance of education, and show our appreciation for all those committed to educating our children. And whereas during this generaliz- generalizational challenge, our students represent a bright future and will continue along the path of service and leadership in our community and throughout our nation. And whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for graduating seniors in our community, including furthering their education, military service, trades, housing, employment, and recreational activities. Now therefore, I'm Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the City of Belleville, Illinois, to hereby proclaim the month of May two thousand twenty as High School Senior Recognition Month and recognize the high achievement of graduating members of the class of two thousand twenty and offer our heartfelt, heartfelt congratulations as we challenge all students to fulfill their goal and dreams. So I hope all of you who have graduating seniors in your families or in your neighborhood, or people that you know from coaching over the years, or however you came in contact, I hope all of us take time to recognize these students this year more than ever because they are missing out on a lot of tradition. Also, I, I did this for high school, but I'm, I'm not taking away, so many are graduating from college and higher education, and so many are also graduating from eighth grade, and that's also a very big milestone in their life before they enter their four years of high school. So congratulations to all those accomplishments throughout the City of Belleville. You are our future and we look forward to working with and, and learning from all of you. So thank you for bearing with me on that proclamation. At this time-
Can I just remind everybody, I'm getting texts about feedback, please try to mute your phone.
Yeah, there's way too much feedback tonight. Okay, I'm, at this time, I'm going to, um, as we do every year in May, I have a number of reappointments. We'll have some more again the next meeting. Now, I, you, these are all reappointments, every one here has served in recent years for a number of years, and if there's no objection, we could read them as a group. Is there an objection, or do you wanna do them individually?
Please read them as a group.
Read them as a group.
Anybody oppose that? Okay, I'm gonna rec- I'm gonna read them and then somebody hopefully will make a motion to approve. My first recommendation, recommendation, Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of Aaron Connor to serve on the Cemetery Board for a two-year term. Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of Jerry Boyer to serve on Downtown Redevelopment and, and Development and Redevelopment Commission for a four-year term. Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of August E. Werner Junior to serve on the Fire Pension Board for a three-year term. Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of Patrick Sullivan to serve on the Police Pension Board for a two-year term. Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of Mary Smith to serve on the Library Board for a three-year term. Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of Helen Thompson to serve on the Library Board for a three-year term. Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of Molly McKenzie to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term. And Mayor Eckert will recommend the reappointment of Jack LaSheen to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term. Do I hear a motion to approve those recommendations?
In charge of-
Who, who is it?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last name?
Who was, who did it?
Hazel.
Hazel?
Hazel made the, who's the second?
Wagon.
Wagon was the second, are there any questions about these appointments? Roll call.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Motion carries. I, I just thought I'd go back real quick, Alderman Anthony hasn't joined us, has he? Okay, alrighty, uh, at this time I'd ask for a motion to approve the City Council Meeting Minutes and Executive Session Minutes from May fourth, two thousand twenty and May eighth, two thousand twenty, do I hear a motion?
Schaefer?
Dittelman.
Schaefer and Dittelman, motion and second. Any additions or corrections on those, uh, minutes from those two, those two dates, the fourth and the eighth, regular meeting and executive, uh, session minutes? Hearing no additions, I'd ask for a, all in favor of approving and, and filing these as, uh, written, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. We go now to claims, payroll, and disbursements. At this time I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of three million, seven hundred and forty thousand, ninety-five dollars, and eighteen cents, and the payroll in the amount of one million, nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars, and forty-two cents, do I hear a motion?
Steele?
Steele made the motion, do I hear a second?
Wagon.
Wagon made the second, do I hear any discussion or questions about the claims, payroll, and disbursements? Hearing none, I call for a roll call.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Motion carries. At this time we go to oral reports. Um, we have a motion, the first one, they're coming from administration because we haven't had some committee meetings, uh, due to this COVID. So the first motion is a motion to approve a contract extension with Electrico, May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, at the current unit prices, and this is both to be used by TIF and, uh, motor fuel funds, do I hear a motion?
Don't move, Wiggington.
Okay.
Wagon.
Wagon, who's second?
Pousa.
Pousa?
Pousa, very good, we have a motion to approve the extension of Electrico's contract through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, at the current unit prices. If there's no further questions, roll call.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Motion carries, the next one coming from administration is the request for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with the lowest, most responsible bidder for the city's natural gas accounts for a period not to exceed thirty-six months. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move, Wiggington.
Schaefer.
Wiggington, and who was the, Schaefer was the second. Okay, are there any questions? Questions or comments? Roll call.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore? Wagon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
That motion also carries, we go now to eleven A three. I'm asking for a motion to approve Coolman Design Group Inc., KDG, for final design of the alley between South Thirty and South Thirty-first, uh, near West Main Street, estimated nine thousand, twenty-four dollars, MFT and motor fuel funds. This is to deal with an ongoing, long-time drainage problem and, and to, uh, get this all straightened out so we can get this fixed during asphalt patch. Do I hear a motion?
Randall.
Randall made the motion, second?
Pousa.
Pousa?
Pousa, very good, uh, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions about this particular motion? Roll call.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
That motion also carries, now eleven A four, the last one from administration tonight, and it's a motion to recommend approval of Coolman Design Group Inc., KDG, for surveying service agreement in the estimated amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, and this will be both TIF and motor fuel funds. This is as we need surveying throughout the year, we need to get this con- got them under contract like we do someone each year. So do I hear a motion to approve this?
Randall?
Randall made the motion, who was the second? Who was the-
Wagon.
Wagon was the second, okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve Coolman Design for surveying services. Anybody have any questions pertaining to this final motion coming from administration? Hearing no questions, roll call.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wagon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Motion carries, I think this, I don't know if this is the first, but it might be, tonight we have no communications, no petitions, no resolutions, and no ordinances. I don't know if I've seen that for a long, long time, if at all. We flip the page to unfinished business, is there any unfinished business, I don't know of any at the moment. Miscellaneous and new business, I will ask for a motor fuel claims, what's that?
New business, Mayor.
New business, who's this?
Ovian.
Yes, sir.
I would like to know if we have a plan to go ahead and start the community back up because Governor Pitsker doesn't know any, any other community other than Chicago. Have you got a plan that we can discuss at our next meeting, or can you come up with a plan so we can help small businesses, so people can survive?
Well, unless they come up with some federal or state money, and I doubt our state's gonna have it without the federal, there is a, the, there is something going before the House, and they're trying, uh, Senator Durbin and Duckworth, I was on a phone conference with them last week, and they're trying to get some help for cities our size or anything under five hundred thousand, but it's not been approved yet, and they're acting like the Senate won't hear it, what I heard today for possibly two weeks. So, uh, we're, we're trying for cities, and I think there's some additional in there for small business, but, um, that would, that would, uh, right now, we have nothing reimbursing us for any of our losses or anything that we could even potentially think about helping other businesses. We just don't have it.
Mayor, my call's been, uh, Steele?
Yes?
And I was wondering if there's any way some of our small businesses could start to open on a small scale.
Well, we've, we've sent, the, the, the mayors of, the mayors of Sinclair County, and we have another conference call tomorrow, have all sent letters, we sent them together, Chairman Kern packaged them up, took them to the, got them to the governor, they've been in touch with him. Our state representatives Huffman and others have been trying hard, we're, we're, they are truly trying to get us to, to get some movement on opening small businesses sooner, uh, immediately or sooner, but, but, you know, we, uh, at this stage, we have not gotten permission yet from the state. We are working on-
Mayor, this is Schaefer.
Yes?
Mayor, this is Schaefer.
Yes?
Um, have we thought about maybe holding a committee meeting for, I don't know if it would be economic development, but, you know, when these businesses are told they can open, there's gotta be kind of a plan because they're not gonna be at full service. So is there something that we could possibly work with these business owners and come up, start working on a plan so it's not the day that we find out that they open? Plan's gotta come up.
We, the, we are-
For outdoor seating?
There's gonna be a lot of guidelines, we're told, given out, correct Jenny? From guidelines on, on the reopening process and safety precautions and, and, and we've been talking in with our staff, um, economic development and myself and, and, and other staff members, um, but, but we're still waiting to hear some more of the particulars, what they're gonna demand, or what's gonna be, uh, from the state. So we're, we're-
And I understand that, but I, I, I understand where you're coming from there, but I also think we need to be proactive, and I'm looking at these cities like Cincinnati who have outdoor seating, they planned it out, and I think we need to start thinking of some ideas that are going to help these businesses.
Well, I do know, I've talked to several of the businesses, and I know that several of them are looking at how they can spread things out. They already, they are already anticipating that the, the state's gonna ask them to, to, uh, spread out the, the use of their property. So we are having some conversations, but we're waiting to see the guidelines before we can, before we can give any additional advice because we're not sure what the state and the recommendations are gonna be. The Health Department, Sinclair County Health Department, and, and the State of Illinois are going to give us guidelines as they start to talk about reopening restaurants and bars. And, and we're gonna do everything we can to encourage them, make them successful, but we're, we're gonna try to stay within all the rules because, uh, we have an awful lot of funding that the, the states, um, got coming our way, and we don't wanna, we, we don't wanna make mistakes and, and, and lose some of those opportunities either for jobs and for improvements. So we're, 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 we're very much aware of, of the hurt that the, the small businesses are feeling, but we're trying to be patient and we're hope, and we're trying to encourage the state in the right way, and that's by lobbying through, with the IML's lobbying, I'm on another phone conference. We're working with the IML to go and try to get things done, we're working with mayors from Sinclair County.
Mayor?
Yes? Who is this?
Mayor? Uh, well, there's also, oh, and Wiggington, I don't know if anybody else jumped in or not.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, um, one thing about it is, we've only got ten days really left till the end of the month. Uh, you know, there's been quite a few people working on this pretty actively over the last few weeks to really try to get something jump-started in Sinclair County. to really try to get something jump-started in St. Clair County. Um, you know what? 10 days is gonna go by relatively quick. And the fact of the matter is, there's four stages, five stages in the governor's plan, there's four regions. All four regions are lumped into Phase 2. That includes Northern Illinois. Uh, at the end of the month, all four regions are supposed to move into Stage 3. I wonder why are four regions all in the same phase? Chicago should, still should be in Phase 1. Downstate, we should already, as of May 1st, been in Phase 3. We should already be open for business, we should be moving forward, we should be generating revenue that we're losing to Missouri, and we're not. Uh, as you know, mayor, you, uh, got, uh, through you, I was involved, and, and I don't know if you wanna touch on this now, but we had that conference call, me and another businessman, uh, and it was put together by Ron DeSosje, uh, with a group out of Chicago to talk about these guidelines that, uh, that Shelley brought up. Uh, it was, ended up being a half, hour and a half, hour and a half, uh, teleconference call. Uh, we covered a huge amount of ground that time. Now, I don't think anybody wants to run this meeting on any longer than it would like to go on. But, uh, when and if you feel it, um, appropriate, uh, there was a lot of, a lot of talk, a lot of information, uh, that came out of this meeting. And in a nutshell, Southern Illinois needs to, and it should already then, open forward. Uh, they should set two sets of guidelines, and this is what we proposed. Set of guidelines for North Illinois, a set of guidelines for Southern Illinois. Don't group us all together like you've been doing on everything else. We don't really care what North Illinois does. We care about Southern Illinois, we care about our livelihoods. I also suggested you go by the, they go by the old advertising that they teach, kiss. Keep it simple, stupid. They don't need the over guideline. Right now, we know what we have to do. Businesses are over, they're reacting, people are reacting, we know what to do. We do not have to put more burden on business that are trying to open up, trying to survive, and we don't need more burden, we don't have a subway out here. We're spread out. Eat the burdens that Northern Illinois has got. And it is, becomes very perturbing that they continue to lump us all together. This other gentleman that was on the panel also, uh, been a business like me a long time, was very, very forceful in, in saying the same things. That's it, I'm not gonna believe in the point, I know people don't want to go this on too long, but Shelley, to answer your question, we're trying to get these businesses open, we're trying to make it easy, we're trying not to over, trying to let them get back to making some revenue for themselves and for the city, because we are generating revenue for the city. That's it.
We, we, we all agree, and we'll keep you posted, but as you can, as Roger just alluded to, we're trying, I'm trying to connect everybody up to have a voice and, and to do everything we can to make things happen quicker and stronger, so we are trying. There's a lot of efforts by, thanks to a lot of people, so. Okay, at, at this time, if we can move on, we have a motor fuel claims in the amount of $123,471.10. Do I hear a motion?
Ferguson.
Ferguson, do I? Elmore is the second. There's a motion and a second to pay the motor fuel claims. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries. I would like to ask for a, uh, motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel litigation, workers' compensation, property acquisition, transfer of property, 5ILCS 120/2C. A motion, please?
So moved, Hazel.
Hazel made the motion, do I hear? Who made the second? Who, who made the second?
Duco?
Duco, okay, we got a motion and a second to go into executive session for the reasons as I so mentioned. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Jennifer?
Okay.
Jen- Jennifer?
Yes?
There. I can get the number on that. Can I get the number from you, please?
Okay, I emailed it out, but I'll text you in a second.
He'll text it to you.
Okay.
Okay. We'll wait just a minute, if you're already dialing in, and we'll take roll call, and then we'll conclude our business here in a few minutes. Okay. I, I'm, I'm, I'm just assuming everybody's getting quicker with this, so. I'm gonna let Jenny start, if they get on, we'll come back and double check.
Cincilla?
There.
Hazel?
Here.
Duco?
Here.
Pusa?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Ovian?
Here.
Dittelman?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Steele?
Yeah.
Rothweiler?
Here.
Elmore?
Here.
Wygant? Wygant? Wiggington?
Here.
Barfield?
Here.
I got everybody but Anthony and Wy- Wygant, did you get on? No, Wygant.
Okay, if we hear him come on, we'll recognize it. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we're back in open session, and at this time, we have, uh, uh, the possibility, if someone's willing, we had, we heard from the, the attorney, uh, we heard the, uh, the, the situations on three workman's comp cases to be settled potentially. So, I, there's three cases, the first case is a, a settlement for $9,873.28. The second case is for $40,520.30. And the third case is for $15,000. These cases were all explained to you, each of you, what was involved, forest surgeries, et cetera, loss of time. And, uh, this, if you, if someone's willing to make a motion for those three cases to authorize the attorney to, to, uh, s- try to close those three cases as brought forward here tonight, then they will go and try to finalize them. Do I hear a motion?
Wiggington so moved, Wiggington so moved.
Motion by Wiggington, do I hear a second? Who was the second?
Cincilla?
Cincilla.
Ferguson.
Cincilla was the second, he beat ya. Uh, so, one question before I call roll, did Wygant get on the phone? Okay, I'm gonna, if there's no further questions about what we listened to and about what was just, the motions just now, um- Who is that?
Just background noise.
Okay, we're gonna call for a roll call vote.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Okay, the motions carry. Rod, you know what to do if you're still on here, and you can get back with me. Um, is there, if, if nothing else, do I have a motion to adjournment?
Rothweiler.
Rothweiler moved to adjourn, who was the second?
Ferguson.
Ferguson. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you very much, be safe, be careful, and we'll talk to you soon. Okay, ladies and gentlemen.